Hello, everybody. Welcome. We're glad to have you here this evening. This is a great turnout. We have a new software that we're using, so we're all working on this together, but we're going to have a great evening catching up with everybody. In just a minute, I'm going to go ahead and pass things off to Grand President Tricia Smith to get us started. But before I do, I just want to point out in the, on your sidebar, you should be able to see both a chat box and a Q and A box. In that Q and A, that's where we encourage you throughout the presentation to ask questions, send us questions. There's a lot of people here this evening, so we're probably not going to get to everybody's questions. But if you, when submitting your question, include your name, anything we don't get to, we'll be sure to reach out to you in the next day or two and make sure all of your questions are answered. So with that, I'm going to pass it off to Grand President Tricia Smith.
Hi, everyone. Thank you so much for joining us this evening. So this event is a town hall, but in a virtual format. And as Jeremy mentioned, we have a lot joining us tonight. We have over 300 people who registered for our event. So we will be answering questions that were submitted when you registered throughout the presentation. In addition, if you do have a question, come up and submit it. As Jeremy mentioned, we'll try to leave some time at the end to get to as many questions as we can. But thank you again for joining us this evening, and thank you so much for your service to Delta Sigma Pi. We have a variety of members and leaders on the call, including chapter leaders, chapter advisors, district directors, and others in roles on the national leadership team. We wanted to take this opportunity to help answer questions so chapters and members have around today's environment and planning for the fall. We scheduled this event to provide you with a status update on where we are at today in regards to the COVID-19 impact on our organization and chapters, fraternity budget, and fall leads. We'll also discuss diversity, equity, and inclusion within our organization. So introducing our presenters for this evening. You've already maxed me, but I'd also like to introduce you to Anuka Ebe, her past grand president, Jody Show, Vice President of Finance, Jeremy Levine, Chief Operating Officer, and Tyler Havens, our Associate Director of Chapter Services. So at this time, I will transfer this over to Tyler for some chapter status updates.
Great. Thanks so much, Tricia. Some of you may have received a call from our Chapter Service Team members in mid to late April. From those calls to chapter presidents, we learned that about 60% of our chapters continue to have either a weekly or bi-weekly meeting through the end of their fall or winter or spring term. Those may have been just the executive committee, a full chapter meeting, or some combination of both. And another 10% of our chapters met as needed. Many of those were met were just to hold elections. Nearly 30% of our chapters were already planning to have some type of summer connection, whether it be a regular chapter meeting, a virtual social gathering, or more likely, an executive committee planning meeting. Some of the chapter summer planning is their regular practice, and others felt that it would be necessary due to not knowing at that time what the fall would present. Our educational and leadership consultants, Dale Clark and I, have all continued connecting with chapters and colonies through the end of the term and during the summer. I know each of us has been part of at least one virtual EC and/or chapter meeting. We've also connected with some of the DDs when requested or warranted. We're available to assist in any conversations or meetings throughout that you are having throughout the summer. So please reiterate to your chapter officers, we're happy to hop on calls and attend virtual meetings to help troubleshoot, provide thoughts, answer questions as best we can, and/or facilitate discussion. Contact us, and we are happy to jump in. I'm happy to say that we've received almost all pledge education programs, and nearly 80% of all of them have been approved. There's still about five chapters out there that have not yet submitted, so please get those in. As host institutions finalize their fall plans for operating and student organization gatherings, we know some of these approved programs are going to have to change. When you know your plan has to change, please email hub@DSP.org, and we are happy to work with you to make the necessary changes to the dates. And speaking of our host institution announcements, here's what we know so far for the fall. As I hear many things from news outlets, I do try to verify information from your institution's website. If you see any messaging from an institution, whether it be sending us a screenshot of a communication or something from their website, please send it to me at havens@DSP.org. About 30% of our chapter or our host institutions have announced some type of adjustment to what was normal for their fall term, whether it be a plan to evacuate students at Thanksgiving or expecting a full online fall term. For those that have already expressed an intention to be in person, it's probably safe to assume that some of those will move more towards that Thanksgiving plan. As I've been learning about institutional reopening plans, a couple of trends have emerged. Some institutions have started outlining what they are doing with large class sizes in student organizations. Many institutions are hosting any of their classes that are 50 or more students virtually. This leads me to believe that those institutions will not allow gatherings of 50 or more people. So with that, I would advise those chapters who have 40 or more to plan for some virtual accommodations for members. And I say 40 or more to account for any pledges that may boost your chapter size to 50 or larger. Additionally, I've read some institutions that are allowing their student organizations to gather must submit a health and safety plan prior to having any meetings. So it's important for chapters to be familiar with your institutional protocols for health and safety going into the term if you are returning to campus. Continually check your institution's COVID-19 website for any gathering advisories or student organization resources. And with that, I'm going to toss it back over to Tricia.
Great. Thanks, Tyler. So at the beginning of May, the Board of Directors approved the creation of a COVID Environment Task Force to develop scenario planning to assist in overcoming both short-term and long-term fraternity operational challenges caused by university and community responses to COVID-19, which would include on-campus, virtual, and hybrid scenarios. Based on the different aspects of our organization that need to be addressed in these scenarios, we created six subgroups to focus on specific areas. Each of these subgroups are made up of current and past volunteer leaders, district directors, regional vice presidents, holding council members, collegiate members, and chapter advisors. We had several questions come in through the registration form asking about the variety of university scenarios that we'll see in the fall. For example, are different plans being developed in accordance with what different universities are planning, including hybrid classes online after Thanksgiving or entirely online? As Tyler mentioned, we are looking at how we can provide solutions for chapters who would have that virtual in-person or hybrid experience. Also realizing that an in-person experience could still include social distancing rules, and how does CMP look for chapters operating in a limited capacity? We are constantly receiving updates on these university decisions, and we're working to ensure that these best practices can be implemented by chapters to support their university requirements as well. So on the slide, you'll see a breakdown of each of the subgroups. The Chapter Operations Task Force is addressing options for chapter operation best practices for meetings, voting virtually, holding virtual events, and maintaining attendance, and CMP and chapter finances. The Operations Task Force, as I mentioned, is addressing CMP. There will be a CMP program for the next year, and we'll be reviewing the adjustment recommendations. It is anticipated, but not finalized, that there will be standardized CMP tier recognitions for all chapters this year. Now, when will you know about this? We understand that some campuses are returning earlier than initially planned in August, and we're working diligently to have these changes in place for the start of the term. The Membership Development Task Force is building best practices for chapter recruitment and pledge program implementation, both in a virtual and socially-distanced world, to help chapters who may experience a change from in-person to virtual in the middle of their program. New member development, including those with shortened pledge programs and members who initiated last fall but weren't able to have a full semester to experience as a Delta Sig, as well as our chapter consultant and volunteer support and support for colony members in a virtual and hybrid environment. Our Ritual Task Force is looking at each of our rituals and what can be done using social distancing rules, virtually, and training for members who are initiated this spring and may not have received the full ceremony experience. The Board is expecting a recommendation soon from this task force that outlines those adjustments to ritual to account for social distancing, virtual, and what those procedures would look like. The Budget Task Force is working in tandem with our VP of Finance and Finance Committee on Budgeting Scenarios based on spring and fall expectations. National Events Task Force will be looking or is looking at what social distancing at national events could look like and how we can accomplish that same level engagement and education in a virtual model. As you know, we have made the move to hold virtual lead in the fall, and I'll talk more about that specifically later in the program. And our Long-Term Planning subgroup is focused on the long-term implications of a next normal after the pandemic, which includes reviewing our governance structure, any limitations to virtual options we may have as an organization, and the long-term structure of our organization. Each of these groups are actively reviewing planning scenarios and providing options for the Board of Directors to consider. Another question that we did receive was about how chapters have to follow a specific safety procedure provided by Delta Sigma Pi, or should they follow their school's lead? So some universities are implementing social distancing on campus, and your specific university requirements, as well as your state and locality requirements, do need to be followed. We will be considering what events look like, how they could look like if they do need to all be virtual, and we'll be looking at all options, because bottom line, we want all of our members to be safe. As you know, each state and even city has a different requirement right now. So we welcome your feedback as we look at what local events can look like for the coming months. Another question that came in was around coordinating community service with other chapters. Our National Community Service Committee is working on virtual service options for throughout the year. Being in a virtual environment can actually provide a great deal of opportunities for co-hosting service initiatives with other chapters across the country. So at this time, I'll turn the presentation back over to Tyler to provide some additional information on what chapters should be due now. Tyler?
Thanks so much, Tricia. I will probably reiterate some of the things that Tricia has already mentioned, but many of you have sent in some questions about what should we be doing now to prepare for the fall semester. There's a number of things to do regardless of your institutional or chapter format in the fall. So let me address some of those questions that we've gotten so far. As Tricia mentioned, our task force is reviewing a variety of operational and institutional scenarios. They will be making recommendations to the Board of Directors that have flexibility and adaptability in mind for all chapter planning and operating formats. Once chapters know how they intend to operate during the term, whether it be in-person, virtually, or some hybrid, you can start making some of your chapter operating decisions. You can also reach out and have conversations with our staff to discuss navigating your particular environment. Again, reach out to us at hub@DSP.org. There have been a variety of questions regarding recruiting, how to do it, and pledging. The first question that gets asked is, do we have to recruit in the fall? The answer to that question is, you should be recruiting all the time, not just in a one-to-two-week period at the beginning of the term. You can be recruiting right now. The biggest piece of advice to start that process is to check and see if any links to your websites and/or social media from your Office of Student Activities or Student Involvement or your College of Business are live, accurate, and up to date. Many institutions have shifted their summer orientations to a virtual format. So with that, they're directing new students to the institution's websites. They may see and understand what Delta Sigma Pi is, but they may not know to look for @DSPOmegaOmega on Instagram. Also, because there will be limited opportunities to engage with students during an orientation session, and we anticipate limited in-person opportunities when getting back to campus, be active. Find ways that will show the value of being a Delta Sig. Brief interviews of members, photos of events, and captions can all engage and recruit potential pledges. It will be important for your social media accounts and websites to truly show the value of your chapter and Delta Sigma Pi, not only being used to advertise for recruiting events. If your institution is expecting lower enrollment numbers, chapters need to find ways to plug into different pockets of student life. It will be important to find a safe and appropriate, to find safe and appropriate ways to go to potential pledges and not just wait for them to come to you. You can go to them in person or virtually. Are there organizations you can follow on social media that also connect with your target audience? Can you DM those organizations and agree to cross-promote? Recruiting for all student organizations on your campus is going to be a team effort. Is there a way to work through your chapter advisor or dean's office to get a message to a specific population electronically, specifically students enrolled in your chapter's identified qualified programs? The more ways that you can expose students to DSP, the higher your return on recruiting can be. Asking if you have to have a pledge education program in the fall is a slightly different question. As we learn more about recommendations from our task force, there will be more direction. Pledge education is the lifeblood of an organization, and even having a few members to continue the chapter's legacy will be beneficial. Be mindful of any institutional guidelines regarding clubs and organizations adding new members during the term. When thinking about your pledge education program, in-person or virtual can look similar. Start with reviewing the Pledge Education Guide and the Pledge Education Policy on DSP.org if you have not yet. This is the standard program for all chapters. It incorporates a number of discussions that can be done in any format and activities that can be easily adapted for both in-person and virtual formats. Review and become familiar with the program to identify areas that can be transitioned to a virtual meeting should that need arise. As I mentioned earlier, a number of our host institutions will operate under what I'm calling a Thanksgiving plan. Some may end their term at Thanksgiving, others may have some remote classes and finals. Regardless, just because you aren't in person doesn't mean your chapter's member education has to end. Just as many of our chapters have shown during their winter and spring terms, events can still happen, whether they be virtual or in-person professional events, individual opportunities for service, as long as they are safe and appropriate to do so, virtual fundraising, or appropriate social gatherings. They continue to be an important and relevant piece to being a member of Delta Sigma Pi. Now more than ever, those personal and professional connections will be important for your operations and more so for your brothers. As you're planning your fall term calendar, schedule events that can easily be transitioned to virtual events, especially as you're looking at events in late September through November. Many have become accustomed, or many people have become accustomed to working from home and doing virtual meetings. It could be a great opportunity to try and engage some professional speakers you may not have had the opportunity to do so before. And even if your term has ended, it could be a good opportunity to reconnect a couple of times during a long layoff between Thanksgiving and the start of a winter or spring term in January. Some have asked about attendance, participation, and engaging brothers if your chapter hasn't, doesn't have full in-person participation. Something you can start doing now is having conversations with your member about their plans for the fall. This will help to direct any health and safety plans you may need to submit. Also, be respectful of the decisions of your brothers. If brothers are planning on not returning to campus because they are concerned taking all of their classes online and still want to be engaged in the chapter, find ways to adapt to that. Which leads me to the next point of start working through your current attendance requirements, and how can they be adapted if some, most, or all of your chapter brothers are planning to engage virtually? If brothers are going to be active either in-person or virtually, there should still be a minimum expectation for attending meetings and events. Figure out where things can be flexible regardless of an individual situation. To engage all brothers in meetings, be concise. Have your agenda available a couple of days before a full chapter meeting, and allow members to ask questions ahead of time and answer during the meeting. If they know they've submitted a question, they will tune in to find the answer. For professional events, we recommend for any format, learning from your members about what topics they would be interested in learning about and the times they are likely to be available. You won't be able to accommodate everyone's interests and/or timeline, but you can be mindful of them. In the last series of questions we had come in, ask about Spring 2020 initiates and ritual. There is still information being gathered regarding what the majority of our host institutions are doing, and our task force is also compiling recommendations regarding ritual. So more information is coming regarding initiation ceremonies for Spring 2020 initiates. Regardless of their participation in a ceremony, all Spring 2020 initiates are considered brothers with all the rights and privileges of that distinction. Through all of this, stay informed with the health and safety planning of your institution from their COVID-19 website and emails. These may also have some direction on any policies, procedures for student organizations gatherings, and use your Student Activities Office or Office of Student Involvement as a resource, even if it's not an office you use regularly. They will have some resources for all student organizations on how to operate effectively within their guidelines. And if your campus has an Office of Fraternity or Sorority Life, again, it may not be an office you are accustomed to associating with. They may still have some more resources that'll be helpful to you as well. And so I think I'm tossing it back out to Tricia.
Actually, I think I'm going to take it here for a quick central office update. So as many of you are well aware, like most businesses around the country, the central office did go virtual mid-March. This is a new adventure for everybody on staff, as it has been for, again, people and brothers across the country. But we have found through, through, in some cases, strong commitment, in some cases brute force, some wonderful success in our remote work environment by the staff. So we are continuing to work from home, we're continuing to support the chapters and the members in various way. Some things that may affect you as a chapter may have already affected you as a chapter, although we are checking mail regularly and certainly depositing the checks that you send to pay your invoices. Some of those processes do have a bit of a delay compared to our normal speedy response time. But all checks are being processed, all invoices are being processed. Similar with orders, we've, although most orders have stopped at this point, we were able to continue processing orders for badges and graduation cords as the like as we continued through the end of the spring and into the summer. A big area that has shifted in terms of our operations is the regalia trunks. And Tyler talked a little bit about regalia and ritual coming forward as we go into the fall. But it's important, while we have received most of the regalia trunks, if any of your chapters still have a regalia trunk in hand, please do work towards getting that ship back to the central office. You should have received some communications from Marissa on our team. If not, send an email to regalia@DSP.org or hub@DSP.org, and we'll be sure to coordinate and get you all the right instructions so we can get those regalia trunks back to Oxford. We are receiving them, we are processing them, making sure everything's cleaned in working order and all the normal summer processing of the regalia so that when we send them back out in the fall, everything is in the best shape possible. One question that has come up from a couple of different sources, particularly in the pre-event Q and A here, is where do you go for questions, especially when you're not necessarily seeing your leadership team quite as frequently? And especially with so much new stuff and unknown stuff as we process through this crazy and new and different time, where can you go? Especially if maybe that DD that you have the closest relationship to doesn't know the answer. And obviously, your regional vice president, your provincial vice president, you know, they're there to support you, and they want to help you, and they want to answer the questions. But please understand that the central office staff is here for you as well. And even through the transitions and the, you know, migration of processes, we've certainly been able to continue to offer that support to our chapters, and we're very proud of that. And the Chapter Service Team, led by Tyler, has done just a terrific job in keeping that up and making sure that our chapters are getting the best support they can. We don't always have all the answers. As you've seen, there are still questions that we don't have answers for yet, that nobody has the answer yet. But we'll be open and honest and make sure that as soon as we do know answers, we'll be able to share those with you. So with that, we are going to pass off to the proverbial mic to Jody to talk a bit about our finance situation.
Thank you, Jeremy. Hello, everyone. I just first want to start off by saying, you know, overall, our national fraternity is fortunate to have a strong balance sheet, and we were on track with our budget going into the pandemic. So that is one of my main jobs as Vice President of Finance. So I was happy of how we're going into the pandemic in a strong financial status. And I want to thank those chapters where Jamie was just discussing, still sending us checks to pay their dues and initiation fees this spring. Thank you for continuing to do that. That will help us as well. And even though we did see some decrease in revenue this spring due to some initiations and dues, we were able to also see some reduced costs to offset that revenue. So we still feel we're in strong shape financially kind of ending this fiscal year. We were able to offer to, you know, no penalties and interest to chapters as they were trying to figure out their amounts due, and we will continue to work with chapters on their challenges as we continue on here. So I'll talk a little bit about what we're working on now as part of the task force. So we actually kind of have two separate teams, as well as board and staff, and we're reevaluating our current budget that we had planned for the upcoming year and planning for different scenarios that we might have to support the chapters. And one question that we received in the Q and A was what would possibly happen with national dues next year? And we had voted on the budget, and we were having a planned dues increase for the upcoming year. But I'm happy to say, even though the committees haven't finished their work, the Board has already voted to reverse that dues increase. So we will not have an additional increase coming for the next year. Our national budget is mainly built on supporting chapters and their operations, covering our insurance, our staff, who is adapting every day, supporting this new way for our chapters. And things like our leads and those types of budgets are separate and not as included in our national dues. So our current thought with our different committees working on this is we will probably remain somewhat close to what our current national dues are this current year so we can continue to provide the support to all our chapters in whatever way you are operating this fall and next spring. I'll say however, your local dues will likely be adjusted as you are learning how you'll do operations locally and there, and we'll be there to support you. So that is a quick update on our fraternity financial status. Thank you.
Great. Thanks, Jody. So now, I'd like to provide an update on fall leads. The Board did vote on a recommendation to cancel the hotels for fall lead events and to transition to a virtual model. This decision was based on the safety of our members, partners, and all attendees, as well as looking at financial scenario planning for the events. While we look forward to a time when we can reconvene in person, the Events Task Force staff and board will be exercising our creativity and working on reimagining lead as a virtual experience. All lead attendees from the past year received a survey to help the task force identify the most valuable aspects that they found of these events. Although we are sad not to be together in person, hosting leads in a virtual format can provide us with a wealth of opportunities, from new sessions and structure to more chapter members having the opportunity to attend. In fact, we hope more brothers will be able to participate because there won't be the added travel costs and time away associated with getting to a lead event. We will communicate more details, including pricing, structure, and programming as they are confirmed, including to those who might have already registered for any of the fall lead events. So at this time, I'll transfer the presentation to Anuka to discuss more on diversity, equity, and inclusion.
All right. Thank you, Tricia. So we all know that Delta Sigma Pi was established in part to provide opportunity for students at New York University who are denied admission to other organizations because of their identities. Since 1907, we've had some proud moments, including being among the earliest fraternal organizations to embrace to embrace people of color, women, and the LGBTQ plus community. However, it's also important to acknowledge that our DEI path hasn't been perfect. Despite one of our founders being Jewish, at some point after his graduation from NYU, he visited brothers only to find out that the fraternity had changed the admission standards to require the Christian pick. When campus pressure rose in the 1940s to racially integrate fraternities, Delta Sigma Pi eliminated the requirement that members must be white from our public bylaws, but moved it into our secret ritual in order to continue denying black students admission. While we were the first professional business fraternity to admit women, it took years of heated debate at multiple Grand Chapter Congresses and the use of board emergency powers to actually admit women. And many chapters chose to close permanently rather than initiate women. As recently as 2010, a diversity task force was formed to examine DEI challenges in the fraternity, resulting in suggested changes to many of our publications and the development of the diversity statement that stands on our website. Even more recently, both fraternity and leadership foundation boards have been discussing how our respective leadership teams do not reflect the rich diversity of our membership. And both of those boards began conversations about how to develop a more diverse leadership pipeline. Unfortunately, some of these conversations this spring were delayed as we pivoted to responding to COVID-19 disruptions. While we've been evolving as an organization, the events across the nation and around the world in recent weeks have made it clear that our DEI efforts need to be accelerated. We traditionally do not publicly comment as an organization of our current events or social events. But on June 1st, we published and sent to all of our members a statement that condemned all forms of racism, discrimination, injustice, hate, and brutality. It explicitly noted our support of the fight black communities continue to wage against systemic racism and indicated our commitment to considering additional steps to examine and address DEI challenges within Delta Sigma Pi. In addition to participating in the national dialogue, Delta Sig's around the world shared their own thoughts and reactions, including examples of situations in which fraternity activities seemed in conflict to our stated organizational values and DEI principles, with many members calling for our leadership to examine fraternity policies and practices. I want to share a specific example of that. For a long time, we've encouraged our chapters to recruit members that reflect the relative diversity of their school of business. We have some chapters on white or diverse campuses that are predominantly made up of black or people of color. What we've learned in recent weeks is that our standard advice to those chapters to diversify their recruitment was received by some as tone deaf at best and as a challenge to their safety on campus at worst. Without diverse enough perspectives in our leadership ranks, even well-intentioned advice such as this can have lasting negative consequences for our members. Over the past few weeks, fraternity and foundation board members and staff have been engaged in nearly daily conversations, looking at operations and practices through fresh eyes. I'd like to now share with you some actions that are currently in motion as well as others under consideration. Guiding our discussions was a goal to engage our members in assessing our operations, education and training, communications, and accountability so that the membership experience lines up with the values we take an oath to uphold. So the items that we'd like to announce right now that are in motion include the addition of a required DEI module to Tier One of the Volunteer Certified Delta Sig Leadership Training. CDL is an online leadership development program that all district directors, regional vice presidents, and board members are encouraged to complete. We have also committed to additional staff-wide DEI training, a review of policies and practices around recruitment of elected and appointed volunteer leaders. This would include our trustees for the foundation, committee members for both the foundation and the fraternity, our elected fraternity officers, district directors, LEAD educational presenters, et cetera. Our goal there is to ensure that our volunteer leaders better reflect the diversity of our membership. We will also be exploring how the Delta Sigma Pi Leadership Foundation can provide funding opportunities to support DEI training and education programs. We are reviewing the LEAD DEI sessions to see if there are updates or additions needed. Our most recent session is less than three years old, but it's entirely possible that we need to do some additional work in those areas. We've had a number of members ask how they can make suggestions. And so one of the things we'll be doing is developing a how-to guide on how to write and submit proposals for policy, bylaws, and ritual changes so the members are better equipped to suggest change. And I'm excited to announce that one of our Central Office Educational and Leadership Consultants, Jasmine Flores, has been appointed the Central Office Staff DEI Lead. She'll be working with both boards and staff to coordinate collecting member input and examining opportunities for improvements as we develop more concrete plans. While these are actions that are in motion, that are being implemented immediately, there are other areas for continuing examination and improvement towards a fraternity experience in which every member feels welcome, valued, and respected. These include the establishment of DEI goals, metrics, and priorities, as well as the systems and processes to monitor and evaluate progress and hold ourselves accountable. These will help ensure consideration of the potential impact of policy decisions and discipline actions on the diverse communities of our members. We also will be looking at establishing focus groups or task forces to gather suggestions from our members on improvement and also to gather input to contribute to implementation plans and goals. We'll be examining the development of additional training and resources for our members, volunteers, and staff with guidance from DEI experts. We'll be looking at our various roles and determining whether or not there should be new staff or volunteer roles or activities related to DEI. We'll be exploring approaches to improve staff hiring and management practices with respect to DEI. We'll also be taking a look at the accessibility of our events, materials, scholarships, awards, and recognition programs to determine where we might reduce barriers to participation, such as language, ability, or access to financial resources. And we'll be committing resources in support of these DEI activities and initiatives as well as others as our needs and goals are clarified. Now, many of you have already asked how you can support these efforts. Many of you have seen a lot of activity on social media and from your peers in chapters across the country and have been participating and engaging with one another. And we encourage you to continue doing so. Many of our chapters have taken action in recent weeks to educate themselves and their peers, members of their local communities, as well as to drive change in various ways. We also encourage you to reach out to Jasmine with suggestions or to volunteer to be part of our upcoming DEI engagement efforts as those take shape. As always, any member can submit policy, ritual, or bylaws recommendations to Bill Schilling using a form from our website. Additionally, I want to highlight that we have a contact form on the website. In the past, members have used that form to report incidents of hazing or other concerns. And we encourage our members also to use that form to report incidents of bias or discrimination. We're now going to transition to Q and A. As a reminder, you can submit questions through the live event Q and A window. We'll do our best to answer as many of those as we can during this town hall and follow up on those we don't get to tonight. I'll start by sharing some of the questions we've previously received for tonight regarding our DEI efforts. One question we received is, how is the National Fraternity promoting anti-racism within the fraternity? I've shared with you today a list of some of the starter actions that we've set in motion. But identifying and implementing real change isn't a board or staff effort alone. Our conversations are now turning towards how we can best engage DEI experts and our members in assessing opportunities for improvement and designing the path forward. We have actually identified some Delta Sig's with professional DEI leadership experience. So we'll be reaching out to them for guidance on how best to approach this. We also, as I said before, welcome suggestions from our members and look forward to announcing opportunities for our members to join in focus groups or task forces to help us broaden our understanding of the current situation that our members are facing as well as the types of approaches that we can take to address those. Another question we received is, how is the fraternity supporting the black community as a whole, not just within Delta Sigma Pi? We welcome members' suggestions on ways to support the black community and other underrepresented communities and align up our organization's purpose, values, and resources. We do not have specific initiatives identified at this time, but look forward to hearing suggestions from our fellow Delta Sig's. Another question in the DEI area was, how do you think chapters with only small numbers of black brothers can successfully work towards anti-racism? Again, to reiterate, we're early in our journey and looking to gather expertise from DEI experts as well as our members. But those of you that are currently on campus have access to a lot of campus and community resources and programming to help groups of all types, including our chapters, begin to conversations that can lead to awareness and action. There have also been resources shared across the internet from our various chapters on books, articles, websites for all kinds of information. And part of what we can do as the National Fraternity is help to share some of those resources as well and direct our chapters to connect with those who have found us. What has the National Fraternity done in the past to condemn racism in its chapters? And are there measures in place or measures that will take place in the future to address dealing with brothers that make racist remarks? Unfortunately, we are no stranger to acts of discrimination, bias, or racism within the fraternity. The National Board has disciplined chapters and individuals for acts of bigotry up to expulsion from the fraternity or revocation of chapter charters. In addition, our merchandise policy bans the use of our symbols or innate in ways that are demeaning to people's identities or in violation of our values and risk management policy. To give a specific example, several years ago, we rejected a request by a chapter to overlay our Greek letters with a Confederate flag. Anyone experiencing or aware of an act of bias or discrimination is encouraged to report it. If there's an immediate threat to your safety, please report to your local law enforcement or campus officials first. But you may also report within the fraternity through your district director, regional vice president, advisor, central office staff, a board member, or the contact us form on the website. I'll hand it back to Jeremy and others for additional Q and A.
Excellent. Thank you very much, Anuka. Appreciate it. While you're on a roll here, there's a question that has come in continuing on the diversity and DEI concerns. Can you speak to the fraternity's future plans as it relates to ongoing communication beyond just the messaging that was sent out on June 1st?
Sure. So tonight is an example of that. So while this was originally scheduled to be an update on COVID-19 operations, we did add to the agenda DEI so that we could communicate to as many of our chapter officers as possible. We also had a similar town hall a couple of weeks ago with our regional vice presidents and other national leaders and shared updates as of that date with that group as well. Part of what we will be looking at is what's the right frequency of communication and what's the right method of communication. And a part of that will be tied to setting what the goals are, what our metrics will be for success, and how we're measuring that. And then the tighter that is how we're communicating that. Many of you hopefully are aware that we've got a set of strategic priorities that we've been using over the past several years to guide our operations. And one of the things that we'll be looking at is how to embed any DEI goals and metrics into our strategic priorities. And we give regular updates to our membership on those throughout the biennium and we'll spend a lot of time talking about those priorities at Grand Chapter Congress. There are likely other things that as they develop, as we get clarity on the priorities and initiatives that we launch, that we'll be pushing out via email, social media, our educational events, share with volunteers, share with chapters, and other ways. But if there are specific suggestions that people have on how we can best communicate those, we'd love to hear those.
Great. I'm going to ask Tricia for this next question here. Will our chapters have to follow specific safety protocols set by the fraternity or only those set by the universities or host institutions? If not, is there any specific fraternity expectations as it relates to following campus regulations while actually doing off-campus events?
Great question. So always in any of our practices, we encourage our chapters to be following university protocols and procedures. We are a guest as a chapter on their campus. And the organization, we will be looking at any policy recommendations or best practices recommendations for chapters to be following. But you should be following any university requirements and any local requirements that are put in place as well. And then we'll communicate out any updates for different fraternity requirements or best practices that we are suggesting.
Great. Thank you. This is for any of our speakers here tonight. How can Delta Sig's and/or our chapters help and lift up those who have been negatively affected by COVID-19 as well as the economic challenges that have for many come along with that?
This is Tricia. I'll take that one. So, you know, our chapters, our members have been affected in so many ways by COVID-19 in the past just a few months that we've been going through this. Although I probably speak for everyone on this call that it feels much longer than a few months. I encourage chapters to look at, to talk to your members. Reach out to members if you are not hearing from them. Touch base as you would honestly, probably on a normal basis if you recognize that members might be missing a virtual meeting or not responding to outreach. But to try to make that personal touch point, to check in on them and see how they are doing. Our members come from so many different areas and backgrounds and experiences. So everyone is experiencing this pandemic in a different way. So being mindful and understanding and working together to support each other. But the first step is always that conversation and checking in on your brothers and seeing how we can offer assistance. Jeremy, there's a second part to that question. This is around financial obligations?
You pretty much covered it. Just it was both the handling of, just in general, as well as those with economic challenges as a result of COVID-19.
Yeah. And I think Tyler hit on this a little bit as well. You know, understanding what your members' limitations might be because everybody does have a different experience right now and maybe a different ability to participate as well if they need to be virtual, even if your chapter is on campus or they're choosing a virtual option, even if your campus is offering an in-person, in-class option as well. So taking in those considerations and thinking through how we can work together to accommodate those brothers who would have different needs.
I would also add in there, Tricia, if, you know, it's not always about the group calls as well. Sometimes that one-on-one, just reaching out, sending a quick text would be helpful. I know that we've all talked about in some way, shape, or form Zoom fatigue or meeting fatigue. And there are some of our brothers that are just not going to be comfortable sharing in that environment. So make that personal connection, make that individual connection as well as the group connection.
Great. Thanks, Tyler. While you're at it, Tyler, can you, you talked a little bit during your slide about the possibilities of virtual pledge programs and what that may look like. A question that many of our attendees have sent in is the age-old question of, will chapters be required to have two pledge programs in the next year, particularly if they may be virtual in the fall? And can you address that?
Sure. That is still being explored about what the requirement would be if your institution allows it. So this would be something that you would need to also, again, as I've said a couple of times, pay attention to your institutional COVID websites when it comes to student organizations, meetings, gatherings, new members. You know, even a couple of members, if you are allowed, will help with that lifeblood of the organization. So it's always recommended if you have the opportunity to bring in new members and potential pledges that you look at the opportunity to do that, educate them, and make them brothers of Delta Sigma Pi. Again, as safely and appropriately and in looking at all of your local health ordinances as you can.
So I'm excited for this question, Tyler, and I'm hoping you answer in the way I'm thinking you're going to. But you were asked what But we were asked what effects there may be to the Big Brother Program as it relates to social distancing and the virtual nature of possible pledge programs.
Maybe I should just let you handle it, Jeremy. There should be little impact on that. As the new program was being developed, one of the things in the policy that came through with the Big Brother Program being part of Pledge Education Meeting One, in addition to not only the pledging ceremony and the education that is happening in that meeting, is the Big Brother introductions. That was done very intentionally in, as you are recruiting, really learning about the potential pledges and those who may be participating in your pledging ceremony and be part of that fall 2020, spring 2021, and beyond, so that you can match your current members right off the bat with individuals that can mentor pledges. It's not always necessarily about finding the best friend. It is about finding somebody that can support somebody through the pledge education process and beyond. So, as you are recruiting and learning and being intentional about learning about the individuals that you're considering offering bids to and putting through the pledge ceremony, find out what they're all about, what are they looking for, what holes of experience does your chapter have that individuals might fill? What are some of the experiences of your initiated brothers of the chapter that will complement those that may join the chapter in the future? So, it shouldn't have a whole lot of impact in terms of the matching process.
Thanks, Tyler. Exactly as I was hoping you were going to say. Personally, I think the Big Brother Program is going to be more important this fall than it's ever been before, just because we all need that extra friend and an extra lead of support to help us through these difficult times. I'm actually going to pass this next question over to Jody. There's two here. One is about what may happen to national dues, and one is about the potential costs for LEED, given that we're going virtual.
Thank you, Jeremy. So, we still have the task force looking at national dues, but my current thought is that the national dues will remain what they were for this current year. So, we did think we were implementing an increase in dues because we hadn't had one in a few years, and our expenses have gone up. But we will not have an increase in dues, but I don't think you will see much of a decrease. The national dues does not cover any of our LEED expenses. So, any fall LEEDs and spring provincial conferences are covered by registration fees for attendees. So, that is not included in your dues, so as LEEDs are moving virtual, that's not impacting our national dues in that amount there.
Great. Thanks, Jody. One more on dues here. For brothers who are unable to pay dues to their chapter, what do you recommend to the chapter? Are they still responsible for paying national dues for that member? And what options may be available to them?
Did you hear that, Jody?
Yes, I think so. So, for current brothers not able to pay their chapter dues, I think I would start by encouraging, using kind of your normal judgment and working with current brothers, if they are in a financial situation, on how to do that. I think it will be important, when you're looking at your budget and setting your local chapter dues, to be conscious of that and what people will be able to pay for their fall and spring dues there. I do know one of the chapter operations task forces is also looking at how to support chapters, ideas, best practices around this area as well. So, I'd say there's probably more advice to come on that one.
Great. Thank you, Jody. We do have a few more questions here. We also have a ticking clock on the end of the presentation this evening. So, I will encourage people to keep asking questions, but I do encourage you to include your name when you do so. First and last is certainly helpful, or your chapter that you're from, so that we can make sure we get back to everybody who has asked questions, even if we don't get to them live on this presentation tonight. A question that has come through a couple of different iterations this evening that I'm going to ask Trish is, "Can you talk a little bit about the timeline for task force recommendations, all of these questions that we've said? The task force is going to address it. When and how can we expect to see answers to this?"
Over the next few weeks, we'll be receiving recommendations from the task force. So, you know, through July and into the beginning of August, you'll start seeing communication from us around the impact of those recommendations. So, we are starting to see them come in now. I know of a couple coming actually in the next week to the board to review. So, as we are reviewing those and as either a recommendation, or perhaps it is just best practices documents that these task forces have created, we'll be communicating that out to chapters.
Great. Thank you. This question's been asked many times, so I'll just take it right off for everybody. This whole presentation has been being recorded. We do intend to send it out to the various audiences in the coming days. So, for those who are wanting to share all of this information with your chapters and chapter members, do keep your eye out for that. We do plan to send out the recording. I'm looking through, knowing we have only another minute, but... There's a question here, Anuka, I'm hoping you can help us with. "What are some things that chapters specifically can do to ensure diversity in their recruitment processes?"
Sure. That's a great question. So, one is having an understanding of what your campus makeup is, and in particular, your business school. And so, if that information is not available on your website, maybe talking to your business school office just to get a sense of what are the dynamics. Next is really just getting out of your friend zones. So, one of the best ways to have a diverse group of any type is to broaden your circle and not be afraid to reach out to people, trial, turn to recruiting tactics. As Tyler said earlier, we recruit all the time, not just during recruitment season. And so, you know, you probably come across thousands of fellow students at any given time, any given day, and we're in our letters, making sure we're always positively representing the fraternity, and just reaching out, talking to a wide variety of people. I think also thinking about ways to, if there are particular groups of students that are heavily underrepresented in your chapter, thinking about meeting them where they are. So, are there particular activities or classes that tend to have, you know, high concentrations of those types of groups or identities? Are there friends of theirs that you can connect with and start to make connections? You know, really try to put yourself in their shoes and thinking not just about how people can fit into your chapter, but how you can embrace other perspectives and identities in your chapter so that your chapter can evolve in a robust and diverse way.
Great. Thank you, Anuka. Scrolling through questions here, trying to identify what we maybe haven't touched on yet. A common theme in questions, not necessarily a specific question, but a lot of the chapter operations challenges that you're working through and trying to think through, not only do we encourage you to reach out to the staff and the chapter consultants for their advice and to help work through your specific individual challenges, but one of the things that the many task forces are working on is the development of resources, so that we can make sure that, as we've always had, a wide library of resources, making sure that the resources we're providing you in these difficult times match those times and match your different scenarios and situations as you may be virtual or restricted in your in-person activities. All right. I think this is a great question to ask and, or end on, sorry. And then, Trish, I'm going to ask you to answer this and then move into our closing and close us out. But the question is, can you talk a little bit about what the process for the recommendations that the task force submits and who it is that's making the ultimate decisions?
Sure. Thanks, Jeremy. Yeah, so, the task force, each task force is reviewing various scenarios. So, anything that requires a change to our policy or to our bylaws or changes to our spending, our finances and budget, you know, any of these changes are made as recommendations to the Board of Directors. In fact, any member within our organization can make a recommendation and complete a recommendation form that is on our website. But what these task forces will be doing is providing recommendations to the Board of Directors. The Board of Directors will vote and make decisions on those recommendations. So, we'll be the Board of Directors that is making those final decisions.
And if you want to go ahead and close us out for the evening while you're at it.
Sure. So, before we close out, one reminder as well. A chapter awards are coming due on Tuesday, June 30th. So, I know that everyone had a very disruptive year, but I also know that chapters did amazing things while you were on campus and continued on virtually as well. So, we encourage chapters to apply for those awards. Again, they're due Tuesday, June 30th. But thank you again for joining us this evening and for your questions. The world is changing daily still, and we are so thankful for all of our members. You know, the past few months have been frightening, heartbreaking, and disruptive. And I know that your chapter members appreciate your leadership, guidance, and support as they are navigating through the uncertainty. So, while you are taking care of everyone else, I also encourage each of you to take time to care for yourself as well. Take a mental break, take a Zoom break. But thank you. Thank you for your active participation this evening. Thank you for all that you are doing for Delta Sigma Pi. We'll continue sharing information and resources and these updates to support you and your chapters. But thank you again for joining us tonight, and we will continue communicating out updates for you. That's it. Thanks, Jeremy.
Thank you, everybody, and have yourself a great evening.